I'm open the meeting for Fox.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion to adopt this.
Motion made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adopt the consent agenda. Town council meeting from January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do you have a motion for that? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda for January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll say it. Motion made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Okay. So on down to public comments, citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda out of respect for the council and others in attendance. Please limit your comments to three minutes, please state your name and address for the record. And is there anybody to call in that would like to make a comment? Any public comments? Okay.
Shut it off there. Light your phone.
Okay, we'll move on to the department reports. Uh, we're going to start with Dennis nine-one, or Scott nine-one-one.
Oh. Okay, we have my report in front of you. We just hired, uh, three people for nine-one, where it's got just people time and one, uh, part-time. They've gone through all their testing and, uh, they should be on board here shortly. They've gotten scheduled, they've been coming in and, uh, we're welcoming them to the family. So these are looking at very nice for us.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Well, sort of.
Well, who gets the last one?
Okay.
Dennis, fire.
I have nothing else other than our first group went to the Eugene fire training. They all seemed to enjoy it and we'll have a probably a bigger group next month going to take part in it. But they all seemed to have a real good time even though they couldn't do a whole lot as far as getting out and eating. Everything was kind of closed up in Eugene, so. But they seemed to do real good and the truck fared and no problems.
They seemed happy, everyone liked talking. Had a good time and said they learned a lot.
They did, they did. Good instructors.
Um, engineering. Daryl?
Oh, yeah, hi, I'm here for Daryl today. Um, I believe we were wanting to update on the called waste building. It's scheduled to be done on Monday. I just went in and checked about thirty minutes ago and I see that the electrician has still been working. Uh, we need the alarm light on the exterior of the building still. Uh, the breaker panel's in, but the interior portion, like the breakers themselves are not in. It's a little simple stuff, so I'm assuming that that is on track. Um, for the cooling water, uh, we are currently waiting on the pumps still. Uh, the building is getting put together. They were supposed to have an installation inspection day through the county, but, uh, no one came out. So we're waiting on that so we can get the walls in and everything on the inside. Um, and then the north end water. We are ready to go out on bid on that. We just need those easements to be sent out and approved. And I believe we're waiting on Jeff or someone to do that.
We received, um, the easement descriptions and I'm working on the easement agreements. It's a little more than just easement because we've got some maintenance requirements and things like that due to the fact that the landowners will be responsible for power, having power installed, things of that nature. So also what sewer rates are going to be charged, things of that nature. Because DEQ switched it up on us a little bit to where we have to own, is to pressurize system. We have to own the grinder pumps coming from the individual service, for stop, larsen, you have to sit in pine and. A little more complicated, but I got those this morning and we should have something by the end of, I would say, week after next. Excuse me. The next week and a half or so out and back with everybody.
The, the goal is to, uh, go out to bid the week of the twenty-second to twenty-second of February.
And that's got to be at least the middle of two weeks for the bid.
So what, what if these grinder pumps bring the sewer side of this private?
It's going to make the difference of about fifteen thousand dollars. From, I don't have a price on those pumps actually yet. I put out for an RFD for them. They're using the same pump in Crescent on another job. They said the cost of pumps was around five thousand dollars. But I, I also want to get a spare till, um, I know Daryl sent out another, uh.
Yeah.
So how did this get announced, Jeff?
You know, that's a good question. Uh, I don't, I don't know, to the truth, it, uh.
Additional DEQ requirements?
It did, it went to plan review and that's when they decided that they did not want the property owners to maintain or own their own grinder pumps. Uh, we have some grinder pumps in town and they've gone through the system and they got approved by the plumbing inspector and installed and they are owned and operated by the owner of the property. So I thought that was the same that would do out there. But then when this whole plan went to DEQ for review, which they had it forever, they, they had it for almost a month. And when they came back, they said that was the biggest issue, but they did not want the landowners to own or operate pumps or maintain them, so.
Did we talk to DEQ at all during the planning and design stage of this system?
We did, and they take, every review period takes about a month. And with all the changes that we were pulling, you know, we went from gravity to pressure, from gravity to pressure, um, per request. Um, DEQ wasn't getting back to us fast enough. So within that whole month that those back and forth were going, we were waiting for DEQ that entire time. Um, so there wasn't really anything we could have done for that. Um, to cover those additional fees, there's the forty-five hundred dollar, um, a year that you, that the town charges to the owners and that will cover that additional fee cost. So that's not more expense to you guys. Um, and then I believe that prior to the owner fees, the new estimated price of the settlement, I think it's six oh five four hundred, right? And then, um, after the owners, uh, pay, it's three fifty-two, right?
Three fifty-two, yeah.
It looks like he's got on here that owning and operating and installing the pipes makes a difference of eighty thousand dollars to the project.
And that includes connections and everything.
Yeah, service function and connections.
Mm-hmm, and that's where that extra forty-five hundred a year each will cover that.
And they all agree to that? Is that the support of sewer rate or is that additional extra charge or?
I haven't talked to anybody about that.
Okay. That's something we need to get cleared up.
Yeah, is there, is there going to be an additional connection fee because of that?
Well, they're talking about a maintenance fee for, uh, I'm hoping to be on their user fee to cover, you know, these pumps are going to wear out at some point.
Yeah, they actually wear out pretty bad. Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know a lot about these. Like I said, we have two of them in town and they're owned and operated by the, by the homeowners, so. I'm glad we're also not responsible, going to be responsible for the power to them because that would be another, to a great extent, you know, we have another meter head out there and another power bill for each location, so.
What, three of these then?
Three.
I just make sure because we've always had problems with not having an agreement signed before contracts go out for bid and then the, the counties will beat the cost.
That's why the easement agreement is going to have all that spelled out.
Yeah, it needs to because we can't afford to continue to eat these costs because of the mistakes we've made in the design. And it seems like if we continue to eat these costs, and it's happened on every project since I've been a counselor here and projects prior to becoming here, it seems like every single time there's anywhere from a ten to forty percent increase in every single project this town's got. So that's why I kind of held a hard line on easements and everything else. It's higher than the payments, all these change orders, we can't afford it.
Anything else under the engineering? Can you put Jeff's public works?
Um, no, that's pretty well covered. I had, I had Hallways and North End that we talked about both of them. I, I did, uh, ask Kevin at our last meeting to get together, take his truck out there, uh, when he had it out next so we could see exactly what it was going to take. The hook from Hallways to his apparatus and he's not contacted me yet, so. Uh, I'd better be getting ahold of him because fifteenth and then we're looking at seventeenth, eighteenth for a training day. He'll not be on.
You might be after the, you need Jeff to give you those dates and I'll make sure that Kelsey, the new owner, gets a copy of those dates. I have all of her contact information and that way they know that we're getting them.
Okay.
You can say you might.
I thought he would have got ahold of me before now, but. It's pretty readily available, so it's like a three inch hose and a couple fittings, so you can get it combined.
You might get ahold of him again tomorrow. Because I know they've been, I've been seeing them, um.
Well, the one I'm particularly interested in is the one for, the one I'm really interested in is the one for the chemical toilets because I know they're.
Yeah.
It's, uh, the small stuff. That's always going to have the most problems, you know, the small stuff.
Okay. Uh, let's move over to Michelle.
Okay, so we had, uh, Cassell come out and train our staff for two full days and it was amazing. We've been. I've learned that we're doing it wrong. Yes. Um, I'm excited about it because we've got a handle on what we need to, how we need to clean up. Um, a lot of our utilities, the way that it was entered in on customer records was incorrect. So we're having to go back and make sure each one of those entries that are either connected to a homeowner or to a landlord are accurate. Um, and it's, we're getting better. I'm feeling a lot more confident in what we're doing. Um, I defended our large pool grant to the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, I felt like it went well until we got a question.
Everybody did good until somebody asked us something.
Yeah, I'm, great, I wish it could have just gotten off. Um, the question was, was I sure that the amount, the grant was for seven hundred and fifty thousand? And was I sure that we were able to do what, everything that we were proposing to do for that amount? And I said I was assured that we were. Um, and he said, I don't think so, I think you're wanting more than what the grant allows. And I, I don't know, I felt like either we're going to be called to go back to the drawing board to reassess how much it's actually costing or they'll ask us to take out parts of what we want to do at the large pool or, or they'll say no. Uh, I was sad, but it's out of my hands now. Um, they, the committee also met for the small grant for, uh, McDonald Park for the seventy-five thousand. We should be hearing back either this week or next. I'm surprised we haven't heard yet. So, um, that's that. Our, tomorrow, our grant for the north water extension goes to committee and we should know two weeks from tomorrow if we've been awarded the grant.
So right around my council meeting.
Yes. Yes, so I'm, I'm enthusiastic about that one and just hope somebody asks me a question. Um, let's see, we've just been doing, um, a lot, just working a lot of cleanup, trying to get the north project online, giving accurate timelines so that we can let people know when we're expecting to break deep ground, when the project should be completed. Um, and meeting with, um, Fire and nine-one-one and just catching up with how they're doing with training. Um, we did a submit for a FEMA grant. Um, but FEMA has been, um, eighty-five million dollars and we cut from their budget to go to Fire and love fire prevention. So it, we, it was a highly competitive grant anyways and it just elipsed itself into being super hyper competitive. So, um, we'll see how that goes. And I think we have a marginal opportunity.
Yeah, one.
Just finally asked questions.
Yeah.
I might have missed this whole thing, but when we talked about raising the water rates, which we just did, right?
That was for the hall waste. You have a bad water and.
The water rates weren't raised?
No. No.
Why? Well, and my wife is going to pay for that. Okay.
I, I know your wife, I don't think she would.
Jay, they, they changed the way they're estimating water rates, uh, with or estimating the water bills and yours might have been one of the ones that they averaged over a year. So you did see an increase on your water.
That's what she showed me and I said, I said, just pay it.
That's not due to an increase in rates, that's due to a, a different format for estimating during the winter time.
I'll go over that one.
You're still right.
Okay. And if I wanted to ask another question about nine-one-one and, and dispatch, or Fire just now at the time?
You can ask, you can ask anytime during the meeting. Anytime these guys do our presentation, you can ask. Well, they're got the four.
Okay.
So you can ask anytime.
Okay. Like, I, I'm totally for computers and all that stuff, but how do you come up with four hundred thousand dollars? I mean, it seems like you can buy a lot of stuff for that.
Well.
Or is that just the ballpark figure?
Well, if you stamp police, fire, or medical on a piece of equipment, you can quadruple the price because it has to have redundancy built in. Uh, Motorola for the consoles, uh, was two hundred and some thousand for a radio equipment. Microwave, I think, was twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the only thing, they have to make them so robust that, you know, you pay for it, I mean.
But I mean, we'll get a list of that stuff or?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that, that would make me go, because it might be three hundred and fifty thousand, right, or no?
Well, it could be, I mean.
I mean, yeah, it could be.
Uh, and then there's also training they provide, they come down and provide training to get everybody up to snuff on it. But you, uh, because it is emergency equipment, it has to be built with redundancy and robust anyway.
Sure.
Over the stuff you can get off the street.
Sure.
And, uh, all of the equipment we're getting now is on, um, will be purchased on state contracts, so it's basically the lowest bidder. But those things just.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against that, I'm just questioning.
Yeah.
How that process works.
I mean, our, our phone system that we just put in two years ago, which was paid by your nine-one-one tax, was over three hundred thousand dollars to answer the phone.
Yeah.
But it has multiple redundancies in it and so that you never drop a nine-one-one call. And that's what you're paying for is the technology and the redundancy that, you know, when they call, it's answered versus a NorTel system or what you can get off the shelf.
So what, what kind of timeline you have for a tech refresh and all that stuff so that you, you stay current instead of us getting the four hundred thousand dollar bill? I mean, is there a way to, to stay current with all of the?
Well, in, in the past, I have requested the town manager at budget time to set money aside just like we all do in real life. As we say, we know we got this roof replaced in twenty years, so you stick a little bit of money. But they had not put, and that was grant, it was grant funded, so the town didn't pay anything for it. But things wear out.
Yeah.
And there was no provision in the budgeting process to replace that equipment. So it's like every, you know, is it going to be every fifteen years that we're going to have a crisis? Or do we put some money aside each year for that capital expense? And from the time the nine-one-one started, the town has never put money aside for replacement equipment. It, it's part of the master YouTube volunteer to help clean that up. Yeah. So we need to put some money into, once we get the new system. Uh, chances are by the time the loan's paid off, it's time to buy a new one. So it's. Nine-one-one on the part of the. I mean, it's like having a car. I mean, by the time you pay the darn car off, it's time, you know, the car's not worth anything, you've got to get it. So taxes and a car payment for a lot of people are forever.
Hey, uh, good morning.
Hey, Ray, real quick, if I can add a little bit on Michelle's on the AFG grant. When we first set out to do that, we was going to do the nine-one-one stuff and then some fire stuff too, but there were certain things that wasn't allowed within the grant under radio equipment, things like that, to get Scott's stuff in there. All it could be would be portables, um, mobiles and paging systems. So we kind of did a regroup there. We've got our grant writer that's working on the portable radios for us and a mobile repeater. And then some of the other stuff, we was looking on the fireside in a grant. We went in regionally with Thomas Creek Westside to do a countywide SCBA grant in Rip Pack. So it would replace all of the SCBAs for every district within the county. And that's going to be expected to be over a million dollars just on that. You know, we're, we're asking for, I think, twenty-six packs and spare bottles and things like that. So that's going to be a big grant, but we got it going on one side and then we got it going on the other side too. So hopefully, and our grant that we're writing is also going to benefit other fire districts too, not just Lakeview. It's going to be everybody else plus the RFPAs.
Okay, we've pretty much covered the whole, all, all business during the department reports. So let's just move into new business. Um, resolution one thousand and three, which is, uh, setting the rate for the hall sewer waste disposal for town hall waste station. I need a motion to accept that.
I need to clear this first and then come on the presentation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, number three, pass this rate, shall be effective five years, May first, twenty-twenty-one. Honor before May first, twenty-twenty-one, the town will like you, shall reevaluate the rate for gallon as adequate as anything in the hallway.
That should be twenty-twenty, um, six. So my suggestion.
More sense because what it's, what the way it reads.
Corrected, actually.
It says we have, even though we both respect what you have, we have made twenty-twenty-one to change the rate.
Corrected, she, that's a, that's actually to be focused on. So my suggestion is you guys make the motion to have it, um, as corrected and that way I'll provide a thin copy.
Okay.
Of the, yeah, it's correct.
I'll, uh, make a motion to, that's resolution one, do the zero-three as corrected. Second it.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, we're going down to Mark Galverson, discussion of town and county split and cost of ordinance officers.
Where do you want me, Rick?
Right, right there, fine.
Okay. Do I have to leave this hot or?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, as you guys all know that we're in a need of a resource officer. Um, most of our calls for South Lake County are within the city limits of Lakeview. Most of our calls for the county are on the north end. And so I got ahold of Clymouth County and the count, the Clymouth County supports theirs with franchise fees from their sanitation department and any other kind of franchise fee. Um, the, the county doesn't have franchise, but you guys receive Lakeview sanitation and then charter cable. And I'm just making a suggestion that I would like to go in partners with the, with the city of Lakeview. Um, since most of the calls on the south end are Lakeview and most of the calls on the north end are Christmas Valley. So we'd split it half and half for a nuisance officer. Um, and my suggestion would be that the city of Lakeview pays for it out of their franchise fees that they receive. Um, I guess that's.
If you look at the cost at all, what it's going to cost for.
So. Most of them are right around sixty to seventy grand plus benefits.
I would say we're at probably a hundred and ten thousand a year.
Right. Most, most of them are right at a hundred by the time you get benefits. And so, um, uh, that was the case. What we want to do is we had Julie Little from this, she, her folks live here. And, um, she's a nuisance officer for the city of Ben. She came down and gave us a presentation and I'd just like to have her come down again if she could and if we decide to partner up. Um, we want to work on our nuisance, not all, not only our ordinance. I think our ordinance are fairly well, it's enforcement part of it that, you know, that we all have trouble with. Um, right now, we just send letters and, uh, the way that Ben does it is they send a letter, then they send a citation after a certain amount of days. Uh, and then it goes to their circuit court. I've also already talked to our court and they said that they would take it. If they don't pay the circuit court, they're turned over to collections and then we can put a lien on them if they don't pay that. Um, how it was set up before was it would go before the commissioners and I don't want any part of it. I want it to be handled by the court system. They get the money out of them, uh, and the collection agency turn it over to them and then it sticks with them. Uh, right now, the way we're doing things, there's no teeth involved. And so I, I'm assuming the city's kind of the same.
Yeah.
So I thought we'd join forces, uh, restructure our enforcement part of it as a group and, um, partner up and start cleaning it up.
The other consideration you guys need to put out there is who's going to normally, see the city attorney or county council, but depending on where that would be, that would have to prosecute that citation. That's not something you have an officer necessarily do, so you have to, so that is an initial cost.
The, the nuisance officer would file.
Correct.
And that would be the end of it, they wouldn't enforce it themselves. It'll be up to the court.
And the court won't go forward without somebody representing the, the agency that's doing it, so that's normal.
Yeah, we could work through all that, I mean.
It's just something that needs, it's going to be initial cost.
I think the, the city of Ben is a very good company.
And I, I should have brought that over to you guys. I have a, a copy of how they do it and.
Try and get a few, I'm very good at that.
Yeah.
I went to that class, it was really good.
I know Don's been doing some of it for us and sending out letters and stuff, so.
They used OR.
We talked, we talked once before about getting a code enforcement officer or something, you know. And, uh, no, I, I like the idea of partnering up. We did when we had dope kicker and stuff.
And also, also we do is like do an MOU with you guys and work on that as a team and.
Kind of like what we are, I'm sure.
Yeah. And the, the position would probably be, um, through Kenny, uh. And the, the position would probably be, um, through Ki- Kenny Cooper would probably be the supervisor since it's plant, planning department has all the ordinances and they have to do the structural ordinances anyways. And so that's probably how that would fit.
Shouldn't our ordinances match though for this purpose?
Um, I'm assuming so, Don, but I haven't ever read the city, so I don't know.
Okay. And also in our ordinance is dogs with the way our ordinance is writ for cleaning. It also has dogs and other things.
So, I mean, that's something we can discuss if we wanna take that on, but we gotta figure out where the dogs are gonna go and who's gonna pay for them. And the, the biggest expense that we're gonna see is if we ever get to the point of abatement and cleanup. Um, you know, that's expensive. That's where the money is. And, you know, sometimes the cleanup is gonna be, costs more than the.
So if it's a rental, is it gonna go on the landlord or is it gonna go on the, on the person that's the tenant?
It's the, the, the owner of the property.
Everything always falls on the landlord. Water bills, cleanups, all, all this.
And the headache you run into is that sometimes some of these properties are worth less than what the cost of cleaning them up are. So that's the other, but it's also a health hazard too. So it's, it's, they're, they're not easy. So what do you do with the property that say that people are disinterested, we've got squatters there?
So we have that going on right now, um, over here. And, uh, there, that, that right now is in the process of the county taking that back because of no taxes being paid. Um, and so that one's probably going to be sold in May, I think, is the date. And, uh, then we have to go in there and clean it. And, uh, that's just part of, see like before COVID, Kenny Cooper, the, the building director, he could shut water and power off. But now that COVID is going, and as you guys know on this property, that I think their water bill's a couple grand, right?
Who's that? One of the city.
One on L Street?
No, it's over on you.
Well, there's another one.
That's a county property. I'm not sure, but yes, I think I know which one you're gonna use.
Anyway, so due to COVID, they had to turn the power and the water back on. That's what's nice about happening under the planning or the building department is because they have the authority to shut things down if there's a safety here. And, and so they could shut off, but since COVID happened, we had to turn everything back on. And so, um, but there's other means on how we can figure out getting them out of there. So. And I'm welcome for any ideas.
But see, because of the COVID regulations now, it's even harder to force a big shut.
Yeah, I mean, you can't hardly evict anybody. And, you know, if we start cleaning things up, it's gonna help our economic development. I mean, it helps everything.
It needs to be done.
It, 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 but it helps with the whole hope in the community. I mean, uh, and people say, you know, they don't have the money. Well, it doesn't cost money to not be a slop. And so, you know.
Maybe we can, uh, do this in a work session and you can bring your stuff over and we'll get our stuff gathered up.
Sounds good.
Then we can go through everything. Then we can figure out just exactly what it's gonna cost each side.
Yeah, we need to look at our ordinances and see. There, there's definitely, I'm sure there's gonna be some changes to some of the ordinances to match sort of counting in the.
I just want us, I want us to have the same.
You know, we can't run with two different.
Yeah.
And to a point, you gotta remember there are some development code stuff, whatever, that are particular. Some of the nuisance stuff, whatever, our development code thinks specific to us because of people being within closer proximity to one another. So there's some parts you can, the nuisance one depends on what the parties wanna look at. But remember, we do have specific stuff in our development code that put certain things, we have different concerns with smaller. Again, it's people being close together. That's what's developed.
We'll do with those as we get to them.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Next one.
Do you have another question?
Are you gonna be here till the end of the meeting?
I can be.
I need to talk to you about a couple of things.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Some of the fire nine-one-one dispatch equipment and the four thousand dollar loans. Um, Michelle's been on top of that really well. We've been talking about this. And you'll notice that the FEMA grant will not cover the equipment that's needed over there. That whole thing needs to be completely replaced. Scott was up on, up on the hill there and we spent four thousand dollars just to get, get it back up and running. And this is what's been happening is we've been physically putting Band-Aids on everything, plus we're outdated. So whereas not covering that, we probably could try for a four hundred thousand dollar loan and get that up and running before it goes down and then we lose everything. We need to do something on this because it's also become a safety issue with law enforcement and everything else. Over there as well, fire department and Washington.
We need to look at what the terms are involved.
So I called Business Oregon and I talked to Larry Holdclock today.
Hold's name?
Okay. Hold Scott.
Exactly. The Larry guy?
The Larry guy. And I am putting together an executive narrative. And I'm asking for Scott to send over a compiled presentation of everything that we need and the dollar amount so that I can get that over to Larry for him to take to his committee. What I'd like to do is send it to everybody and say, this is what we're needing, this is why we need it. This is when the last time it was, um, replaced. And, um, the estimate I was getting from both Scott and Dennis was around four hundred thousand. Until I get all of the specific prices in each item, I won't know for sure. But there's, the chairs that they're setting in are, what, ten years old?
Seventeen. That's all?
Um, so there's just a lot that needs to happen over at nine-one-one. Um, I mean, we maybe updated carpet and paint and desk chairs and desks and equipment. And so we're gonna have to decide what it is that we wanna do. Um, because I'm kind of folding in all of those things at once. Um, and so it'll come down to just what you guys decide that you wanna include or not include.
I'll put a package together and look at it. I mean, I, I think it needs to be done.
And most of our operating systems are Windows nine-five and, uh, everything is non-supported. Um, we could go to like, uh, Washington County or Platte County or the big boys and get their used stuff to do Band-Aids, but it's still Band-Aids.
But you're spending a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars on Band-Aids.
Well, just like the, the four thousand dollar bill to redo our, fix our radio system was a hundred dollar interrupting power supply that was put in in, uh, two thousand sixteen. And it gave up the ghost and just wiped our whole repeater system out. And programming costs were basically, it was, this IT cost were four thousand dollars. Were a hundred and fifty dollar.
Your guys' radios aren't very clear either. Right, listen to them all day.
Well, which is sort of nice, but the, the county owns, the only radio system that the town owns is between dispatch, the microwave, between dispatch and the mountaintop. And the reason why we went for the microwave is it used to have copper lines up there. And then the radio system equipped. So then we call CentrLink and pay them three hundred dollars to go up and say, no, it's a radio problem. So then we pay the wireless three hundred dollars to come over here and say, no, it's a CentrLink problem. So then we had to get them guys together and say, and fix it. So we went with one vendor, one path, so we didn't have to deal with copper or Billy Bobbin's backhoe up there. They give something else. And, uh, and it's worked very well, but we're at the point now that, uh, they're just.
You gotta come into the finance.
Well, they're not supported anymore. Uh, you know, that's just the industry. They're, you know, you buy a computer tomorrow and then, you know, within, well, when you buy it, it's obsolete.
Right. Put a package, you gotta bring it to council and look at it and what we can do.
Perfect.
I would say the center is the better.
Well, I gotta know. I got salesmen still calling me going, what council say? What council says? But there'll be some other added, I have to add in that, you know, our, uh, printers, our laser printers are seventeen years old.
We'll put, put a complete.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just do a complete match and then, you know, if we, over the wing, sorry, we fill some stuff down. I, I'd rather see everything all at once and then we'll determine what we can do now and what it may have to be later. I said, um, halfway through the project saying, oh, I need another two hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'd like to see. Yeah, cause I don't wanna see like six hundred thousand, you know, or whatever. So.
So I, I think, I mean.
But every, anything you can think of stuff that needs to be dealt with and upgraded, just throw it in.
I, I had that lecture this afternoon. I'm Scottish, so, you know, I, you know, for many years, you know, we had the use, uh, is for notebook paper, we took the old teletype paper, cut it in half and glued it for our scrap paper because we had no money for, uh, for sticky notes. So.
Okay.
And when you go to the bathroom, you're all alone once you.
I can't even have to hear. Mike, you need a bag, let me know now and not after. Because just give it off to me right now, let me know instead of piecing it in.
Well, yeah, it makes it easier for the council to make a good education, the student, what you need to do and, and the direction you need to go.
Yeah, cause, you know, you, you pay for it and then I come back and say, oh, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't want that.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? Michelle, Don, Ronnie? Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at, uh, four forty-three.